All right, we are live.
All right, good evening. Welcome to the Oberlin School District, excuse me, the Oberlin School District Oberlin Board of Education regular meeting for June 22nd. Wow, June, almost into June. Call to order?
Ms. Amaka.
Here.
Ms. Shum.
Here.
Ms. Jackson Davidson. Mr. Stanley. Mr. Williams.
Here. All right, do I have an emotion, do I have a motion, not emotion, a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
So we have some additions.
Call to roll.
Well, we need to add.
Okay, yeah.
David, could you scroll down to the red items on the agenda? So in addition to the red items, we have a resignation of Christine Bayless that needs to be added.
Okay.
We also have to add Erin Mason, interventional specialist. Amy Swoop, Director of Curriculum, Ethan Weblen. And we have Brian Joyner to be added to the agenda as well for summer school instructor, and Christine Payne for summer school cafeteria helper.
You can tell lots of things are happening personnel wise. You guys are busy.
We are still interviewing. Wrapped up some today and we have additional ones tomorrow and Thursday.
Not like you had anything else to do these days.
No, it's good, it's good. We just had a couple of people that took other positions at other places were notified today.
All right, so I don't think there's any other changes, Jason.
Okay, that's, that's everything, okay. Now, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, we have to call the roll under Agenda Change.
Call the roll. But we just did, I mean, let's.
Ms. Amaka.
Yes.
Ms. Shum.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanley.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes. Okay, that was for the update.
Have us further revise the agenda, yes.
All right, okay. Now, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? No, call the roll.
Ms. Amaka.
Yes.
Ms. Shum.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanley.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes. Okay, now, do I have a motion to move to executive session to prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning compensation and other terms and conditions of employment with action to follow?
Some of them.
Second.
Call the roll.
Ms. Amaka.
Yes.
Ms. Shum.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanley.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we will be back.
Could you, could you text the link?
Yes, yes.
Ah.
Yep.
Okay, is everybody back?
I see everybody, Jason.
Okay, I was trying to scroll through here. Alright, um. Do I have a motion to return to regular session?
Some of.
Okay, uh, call to roll.
Ms. Amaka?
Yes.
Ms. Shawn?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. Okay, uh, citizens concern on agenda items. There were no concerns. Is that was, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, alright, uh, I'm sorry. Did somebody say something?
No, just referring as no con- concerns, submit it.
Okay, uh, news of note and presentations?
Yes, um, today we have a couple of presentations. We have Melissa Linebrick, like of communications update, facilities update. And, um, I'm gonna let them go first. Um, I do have an update academics. Um, Mr. Williams asked about, we did, um, administer our third already assessment. So we've had made some growth. Um, and, um, economic disadvantage, special education from the first assessment to the, um, to the third assessment. So students showed have shown progress within the first assessment to the, uh, third assessment pieces. And, um, I can go more in detail with that, um, but I want to give opportunity for Melissa Linebrick to give, um, our communications update. Melissa Linebrick is our, um, communications supervisor and she'll give you information about the use, um, how much does increase and all that. Turn it over to, um, Melissa.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hall. Um, I just wanted to give an update since, um, as of July 1st, it would be one year since I have taken on this role, um, to handle communication throughout the district. Just wanted to give an update. Um, I did update the board behind me. I know some of you pop in from time to time. This is where I keep all of my information, letting people know how many news stories there have been, how many times we've been on the news, and then just a general overall, um, information about our Facebook page and ever, and all of our social media pages. Um, when I first came on board, um, on July 3rd, 2020, the Facebook page that we use for our district had four, um, 514 page likes. As of today, there are 718, and we also have 841 followers. So that's about a forty, uh, forty percent increase in one year, um, considering the fact that I came in and, you know, had to revamp the social media pages from start. Um, that's a pretty good increase. Um, we also have a Twitter account. Um, as of July 2020, there were about fifty-six followers, and now we have two hundred and sixteen followers. So that just goes to show that where our data is being seen by families and everybody is mostly through Facebook and Twitter. Um, in terms of Instagram, I finally created a district Instagram page. Um, that's where a lot of the students are getting all of their information right now. So we felt that it was important that we went that avenue and opened up or created an Instagram account. Um, like I said, I started that in November, actually on November 20th of 2020. Um, so far, we have a hundred and thirty followers and there have been three hundred and twenty-one posts. Um, it's the largest growing social media platform that the district has so far. My plan for next year is to really utilize it. I've been utilizing it now as well. But I really want to see, you know, that's where a lot of our information from our students is, and they even said, you know, thanks for posting it on Instagram. Because it's, you know, that's where they're at all the time. Um, but on the flip side, we also have to keep up with Facebook and Twitter because that's where a lot of the parents are getting their information. Um, just to let you know that, um, I've also revamped the community blog for the district. So far, we've had seventy-eight published posts. Um, as of June 2021 already, we've had six hundred and one views with three hundred and ninety-two visitors. Um, the highest month that we have seen is March of 2021 with one thousand three hundred and nineteen views and nine and nine hundred and sixty-three visitors. Uh, that month was really big because, um, Ms. Whitehead's story about being nominated for teacher of the year, that saw four hundred and forty-three viewers. And unfortunately, and then the second one was, um, Mr. Frank leaving the district, and that had three hundred and sixty-three views. Um, so far to date, we have had ninety-two articles published in the local newspapers. We've had forty-seven stories in the Morning Journal. We've had forty-five stories in the Chronicle Telegram. We've also had, um, some features in that local news itself from Channel Five, Channel Nineteen, Fox Eight. Um, and then we also, uh, we had our, one of our seniors feature on the Today Show, and that was to celebrate her graduation um, this year. And then we've also were featured in the Fall 2020, um, Educational Service Center Newsletter, and that featured our new facility, which is, you know, almost complete right now. Um, so anyways, I just wanted to let everybody know kind of what I've been doing. Um, just, you know, if anybody has any questions or concerns, I'd be more than happy to answer them. I'm here usually twice a week in the office, but I'm also working from home. So I just wanted to, like, like I said, Dr. Hall and I have been working together and just wanted to give everybody an update on where we've, where how far along we've come. So that's all.
Melissa also, uh, delivers a newsletter to the community every two weeks, and we also started the community newsletter um, as, as well, working with Shirley Hall on that. Uh, we'll administer, uh, distribute the community newsletter about three times a year. So, um, that's been a group, and getting that back up and running, and we'll probably reach out to some different agencies like the old newsletter had where they had different, um, things in there as well, from like the FAB and, um, IGA and things like that.
So maybe can I actually ask about that? So that, that newsletter, is that something that the school district is financing right now?
The one that went out to the entire district?
To the entire community?
Right, to the entire community. Yes.
And, and so at this point, there's no, um, ads, there's, there's nothing else that's offsetting the revenue. So it's taking, uh, don't get me wrong. I think that that vehicle, getting something imprint into every household in this community is something that we absolutely have to do because not everybody's on Facebook, as you've just said. The kids are on Instagram. You know, the voters, you know, there's a, there's a huge percentage of voters that aren't on any of it. And so without a local newspaper of significance, you know, we need a vehicle to be able to get messaging into people into their homes. So I, I have no problem with us doing that communication. However, it just seems odd that this is a community-wide resource that I would think that the city, you know, they've been putting out a monthly agenda for the city council. This should be something that the city could be helping to offset the cost for. Um, and as you've just said, some of the, uh, local restaurants and establishments businesses that could buy advertising. That, that's, I know that's a whole huge job to, to sell all of that, but.
Right, that would be my main, I don't have, my, my background is not in selling, and honestly, I don't have time personally to go to all those places. Um, we would have to think outside of the box and work together, um, to have. I know that Shirley has in the past created ads for those businesses, but then we would have to figure out a way to offset while, you know, how much is a full-page ad? How much is a half-page ad? Quarter-page?
You know, I think we should be pushing Shirley on that, I think. Um, and, and pushing isn't the right word. We should be engaging the community of resources. So I'm not saying add anything else to Melissa's plate. Melissa's plate already overfloweth, I know that. So, so, but, but I, I feel like we have reestablished an important piece in the Overland community. And, you know, we, we are all employed by the, the, the community members right now. And so finding a way to actually leverage, we, we've taken the impetus. Like, we've gotten this back up and running, and we're, we're funding a huge chunk of this, but it is not sustainable for us to do this, and it's also short-sighted. This, this should be something that others are taking advantage of and taking some ownership of. And so maybe, you know, we can encourage, that's a much nicer word. We can encourage Shirley to, um, you know, pursue something with city council, with other groups in town that would actually be able to benefit and convey messaging into every household. That's key.
Yeah, I agree. Once, you know, once that Town Saver, you know, was no longer being published, you know, that was huge because, you know, IGA was in there, the FAB was in there. And then, you know, we had the back half of that for, you know, our school district news, and that really hurt because that was like the perfect relationship that we had. And then. And then it just would, for whatever reason, you know, I don't remember, I wasn't here when that happened. Um, I know when I worked at the newspaper, you know, it was a lot of COVID-related ads were being pulled, but I don't know if that was a situation that's what happened there or not, but that's a good point.
And, and we have the Oberlin Business Partnerships too, probably, they be periodically going there to, um, and, uh, certainly when things calm down a little bit, to talk to Shirley to see how can we, uh, what was her format, what was her procedure, because she already has a template already ready, because she did it already. So let's deal with her to figure out what was the template, what was the process for it. Dice may, maybe as simple as going to Oberlin Business Partnership and saying, hey, guys, do you want to, um, contribute to this three times a year as well? So, um, we'll definitely ask an area we need to work on. I think this have a lot of possibility. Uh, we just wanted to get something out there as soon as we could, uh, to the community, uh, just with COVID and everything else going on. But I think the next step to this, taking this to another level would be to initiate, to get those partners back in place. Uh, especially right now with, with COVID going on and end of COVID, hopefully the end of COVID, I think a lot of businesses could use this advertisement. So to spark more people back up and Elsie, our Oberlin College coming back to school more full-time, I, they can, we can all use this spark to get news out there, hey, we're up and running, we're still here, we're Oberlin, and the FAB is still open, and new businesses are still open, Lorenzo's is still open. Um, so I think definitely we could end up reaching, reaching out.
You can give the college another platform to convey why they cut down all the trees. I thought just keeps coming up.
That was the college and not Oberlin City School, so we didn't cut out.
We didn't.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Yep, thank you.
Um, next, I'd like to give, um, our facilities pieces, Dandy Nicola, and give them an opportunity.
Doctor Hall, why don't you go ahead and play the video, and then Rich can make comments?
Yes.
I'll give you a few comments. Um, since the, um, tape was made, asphalt did start, we have probably eighty percent of the basin, that was last Thursday, um, then the rain came. So, um, we're, we're scheduled to start asphalt or resume asphalt again on Thursday. We'll finish the base, which is at the main entrance and at the receiving area. Then on Friday, we'll do the surface course, so it should, um, asphalt should be complete on Friday, and then we'll strike, um, starting the following week. Um, the roof, um, it, which you saw quite a bit of, has been inspected, and it did pass, completely passed inspection. Um, the warranty has already been issued. And, um, add you, I don't know if you noticed, but for the, the rooftop solar, the roof pads and some of the solar installation was underway. The, um, solar array is complete on the roof. It's just a matter of connecting it, um, electrically now. Um, second floor, the, uh, flooring, the VCT or vinyl composition tile is complete in the quarters and hallways, and today we received above-ceiling, um, inspection, or we passed above-ceiling inspection for the majority of the building. So ceiling pads did start to go in, um, this afternoon. So those will continue for a couple of days. That'll be complete. The casework is complete on the second floor. We'll do touch-up painting. And, um, we're looking to start waxing later this week, the first couple coats of maintenance wax. And, um, following that, we'll start, um, with furniture coming in next week. Um, first floor, that, that kind of showed the start of the VCT on the first floor, it's come a long way, um, in the last, you know, few days. We started Torazo, um, in the, um, towards the main entrance in the back corridor over by the media center and the public restroom dining area. The next area, uh, for Torazo will be the dining area, and then we'll move to the main entrance, which is also where the emblem is. Um, it did show the gym floor, um, this come, again, that's probably seventy-five percent complete right now. The photograph showed the, um, subfloor and going in, and the planks were in there being acclimated. Those will be done, it should be set or complete, setting the planks this week, uh, by the end of the week, we should start, um, sanding next week. So those are a few highlights, I, I believe, of, you know, things of interest. Eight, uh, air handler units are all running. They've been balancing. Um, again, that, that's, I, I think pretty much a brief overview of, of progress. Is there any questions? Are there any questions?
Thanks, Rich. Appreciate all you're doing, um, Dan as well, and also the TDA and Green Space team. And I know we have a lot of changes, a lot of new things going on there, from, um, graphic designs to, um, to lockers, to a lot of things going on within the school. Um, thank you for, uh, working with us on those, um, aspects too. And I'm glad to know that we're on time too as well, and within our budget. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to comment really quickly, David, that, you know, being, being part of the facilities team, hearing the meetings is always illuminating. So, I, I never knew this level of detail about what kind of goes into these buildings and what, what all they're negotiating. I can't even fathom, when I think about how many plates I have spinning, how they manage this kind of project, this many pieces. So I, I, I will echo your thanks to all of the teams, internal, TDA, Green Space, you know, you guys are walking on water. I'm, I'm, I'm very impressed with the overall project.
Well, thank you on behalf of everyone.
Thank you. Thanks, Rich. Um, next we'll have Mr. Bayless, we'd like to, um, tonight we have, uh, on a board agenda, a literacy, curriculum that's being purchased for the district. Um, the district has been working on our literacy initiative for, um, this year with our literacy grants. We purchased the materials. Uh, Mr. Bayless and his team would like to, uh, inform the board, the process, and the community of the process, and, um, what do that literacy initiative entail, and also the curriculum materials that entails as well. Mr. Bayless?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I'm here with Olivia Wiseman, our literacy coach that we, uh, hire through the ESC as part of our Comprehensive Literacy, uh, sub-grant, uh, for literacy this last fall. And we're going to share our screen, Doc, if you give us our, uh, permission to share, that'd be great.
Have it multiple business, sure.
Okay. So, uh, as everybody knows, we're very, very, very fortunate to, uh, receive a grant from the Ohio Department of Education for the Comprehensive Literacy Subdevelopment Grant, um, for the elementary school, uh, last summer. And then coming late, they did a second round of, of, uh, funding that made available for secondary levels, because not enough people signed up for the, uh, original grant level. So we were able to get an additional five hundred thousand dollars for a total of one point five million dollars to work on our strengthening our literacy comprehensive curriculum for grades P, well, K through eight, but we're actually strengthening all the way down to pre-K. So we were fortunate to be able to engage in that work this last year, and I'm going to tell you, it's probably some of the most amazing and the most engaging work that I've been, uh, part of as a, as an administrator, or even as a, as an educator. Um, I think the board obviously knows that I've been involved heavily, obviously, um, as a secondary administrator, prior to my administrative, prior to my position as a curriculum director, uh, and it was been, it's been great the last few years to really find out how the sausage is made, uh, and being involved in the, uh, in, in the pre-K through five curriculum, but it's even been more strengthened, uh, by the fact that I've under, really grasped how students learn to read, uh, and understand comprehension of reading through the science of reading. Uh, and so we've really had that ability to not only enlighten myself, but enlighten our teachers, uh, through that process as well. So we're going to go to the little PowerPoint and, and kind of talk about some of the highlights this last year. Um, there's a lot of bullet points. I know you're not supposed to do that, but the grant really entails a lot of work. And our teachers have done so much, um, even more so than you would think, like in the time of COVID. Uh, so really hats off to them, um, you know, managing their own classroom instruction through the pandemic, learning, and then applying what they're learning in the classroom, and then ultimately applying what they're learning, uh, in the selection of a curriculum, uh, going forward for the next five years or so. So all K-five teachers were invited to training this year through the grant for the initial piece for K through five. Uh, we changed our, uh, assessment tools. Misha Baker was awesome. We found a lot of conversations as a, last year, as her first year as a principal in the district, and really having discussions about why, what are we, what assessments are we giving the students, why are we giving them? What are they actually assessing? Um, and really, there's no purpose in assessing a student if you're not using that assessment to make decisions and, um, and, and really looking at that data to, uh, inform our instruction, instructional practices, and, um, and, and make changes in what we do as educators. Uh, so really simplifying and looking at what we're doing, uh, we made choice to chop some, some fat off. Uh, we went with Acadians as our, uh, progress monitoring tool. Um, and teachers receive professional development in that. Um, most importantly, I think, this last year, teachers actually received professional development in letters training. And I'm going to ask Olivia to talk a little bit about that, but essentially it's the language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling, and it backs up the science of reading about how students learn to actually read. Um, and so Olivia, if you want to pop on really quick and just talk about that piece, and then we'll just keep going on.
Good evening, thank you. Um, yes, Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, which we talk about as letters, is a professional development, not a program. I always try to encourage that, because what it's doing is empowering the teachers with more knowledge to know how to be diagnostic in their teaching. So we go very in-depth um, to looking at the granular skills that a student needs in order to be literate. And then what strategies can we use that are evidence-based to help our students improve? And this has been, um, you know, in such an odd year, and it's a lot of learning. As you see there, it's over seventy hours just for this year. And we had all the K to three teachers did this with us this year. Next year, um, grades four and five, and any new teachers in grades K through five will be joining in on this learning. Um, but it's a very intensive learning process. Uh, I have yet to meet a teacher that hasn't found it um, extremely beneficial and changing, and that's from teachers that were like first year, clear up to teachers that are about to retire. Um, so it's getting very in-depth and in the weeds, and then we've been able to gain resources to kind of support some of those instructional pieces. Do you want me to show the next slide, William, to go along with that, or?
Go ahead.
Okay, if you can go to that one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So one thing, just so you can kind of see this visually, is we give a pre-test to all the teachers on the learning that we're doing in units one through four, and that focuses on kind of background knowledge to literacy, uh, phonemic awareness, which is, uh, a student's ability to manipulate sounds, for them to be able to hear a word like cat and go k- at. Uh, phonics and decoding skills and advanced decoding skills. So those, that's what we kind of covered this year with our K to three teachers. As you can see here, the average pre-test on the teachers that we've had got a sixty-three percent is the average. As you can see here, the average pre-test on the teachers that we've had got a sixty-three percent is the average. The average post-test ninety-two percent. And if you'll enter again, William, there, it just shows that gain of about twenty-nine percent. Growth for those teachers that have been partaking in this, and I will tell you that the conversations. Have changed dramatically with the teachers. Our conversations during teacher-based teams into really breaking down the data and figuring out what strategies to use with our kids. Has been very dynamic and in depth. So the teachers have been working hard. It's been wonderful. That's the bit about letters there.
Okay, thank you, Olivia, for popping in there. Teachers also participated in other professional developments. And Olivia did a lot of support in those future-based teams, as he has mentioned. The grant has also provided an opportunity for us to hire a specific literacy coach. That will work at the new Auburn Elementary School on top of, or I'm sorry. In addition to having Olivia as more of a grant facilitator and more of an overall person. But this person will be in the district every day. It's really kind of sad. I don't want to say, well, I will say it, it's sad. We don't get to have Olivia every day. She is a wealth of knowledge. And she is wanted by many, many districts. She actually has been granted a spot on the upcoming Dyslexia Committee for the state of Ohio. And we'll bring that knowledge back to our district as well. So she's just incredibly knowledgeable in this, again, widespread. But having somebody in our district that can. Understand letters, understand the work that we're doing. The grant supports that with somebody that's going to be in the buildings every day, and that's my, that is part-time. So as part of letters, we were able to utilize our teachers and educate them on the science of reading. You know, and it's really unfortunate. I know, I know people kind of get a bad feeling about sometimes about the way that we're taught to read, and you guys may not. We didn't want to go to like a whole teach you how to read. Seminar this evening. But essentially, there are two systems. There's the whole language piece where we, we talk about the three queuing system, and we talk about look at. And I was taught that way, and it depends on where you are individually as a family. If you come from a solid family, that maybe you're, there's a lot of literature in your household and you're reading with your kids. The three queuing system works well for you. A parent or a teacher might say, look at the words around it and try to make context of the word. Look at a picture in the, in the reading, and that might help you make sense of the reading that's going on. But ultimately, that doesn't work for every kid. So really going back to the science of reading and. Strengthening that tier one instruction. So that every kid's, every kid is exposed to good tier one instruction. Regardless of if they're an advanced student, if they're a bottom student, if they're a ELL student. They get the good stuff right off the bat, and then we can differentiate at the very end. If they have some differences or learning difficulties at the end. So the teachers really got into that, and I, I'll be honest, I didn't. I thought the teachers might hit us with some resistance, but they really ate it up. And they, I think a lot of it has to do with Olivia's approach. And her explanation of the science of reading last year before we engaged even applying for the grant. And them having an understanding of it. But ultimately, we knew that we were going to have to work at. A unified curriculum for the district. I think a lot of times people get consumed with the idea that IB is the curriculum, and it's not the curriculum. IB is the enhancement. It's the lens that we look through things, it's the framework. But we have not had a unified ELA curriculum in this district for. I can't tell you how many years. Teachers pick because of academic freedom, they've picked different pieces and parts. They found things that have, that worked for them in their particular teaching style. Or maybe they worked for a particular class of students. But ultimately, that results in a very fragmented system of educating our students in reading. And so one might work in third grade, doesn't work in second grade. Will make work in this one third grade classroom, doesn't work in another third grade classroom. So really coming back and looking at the scientific way of how kids learn to read. And educating teachers about it has been the focus this school year. And so we went through the curriculum process after the teachers have received letters training. And we went and I want to pop really quick on the timeline. Hopefully, this works correctly, Olivia, right? Cross your fingers. There we go. So in March, I'll minimize, like, I only see you guys. So in March, we, we completed a literacy audit. We looked at the materials that we had. We started to go through the review process of our curriculum tools that we had. Then we were able to pull together a team from March to May to really look at. The phase one process, and I'm going to actually change this back to a fit. I'm sorry. So the teachers, there we go. So the teachers were able to use a rubric based off of the Colorado State Literacy Initiative. To be able to look at the core instructional materials and see how they aligned. And we obviously were able to see where our deficits were and our gaps. And then I did my research as a curriculum director to come up with. A list of. Curriculums that were adequate and met the needs of the district. And what I did was I researched Ed Reports, and I'm not going to go into that tonight too much. But the idea was that Ed Reports is an independent association, and they analyze curriculums. And they give their rankings. There's a red was for bad, yellow for okay, and green for excellent. And we've selected several curriculums that were in the green. They were scientifically based, not evidence based. So really, there's, there's science base behind the curriculum. Anybody can find evidence based, you can find evidence anywhere if you want to justify your cause or case. So scientifically based researched practices within the curriculum. And then we were able to reach out to vendors. And complete phase two. And have the teachers actually work through the process of looking at those different vendors from March through May. To complete the work that had to be done. So we have selected five Amplify Core Knowledge, Art, CKLA, Open Court, Learn Zillion, and Savas My View. The team was comprised one grade, one member of every grade level, special education. I'm sorry, our Title One Specialist. And our special ed teachers. Came down and they narrowed the decision down to CKLA and Open Court. Doing a more detailed analysis between those two particular publishers. The eventual decision was to go with CKLA. Sorry, I bumped the screen there. And that is the decision of the team going forward. So it's not William Bayless's decision or Olivia Weisman's decision. Is really a very. Very in-depth group decision and analysis of the materials. And in terms of how they align to the science of reading, the state standards. Making sure that the materials have. A representative of the students in our district. That there are Hispanic students, that there are African-American students. That there are things, there are ties to IB. That kind of fit into the, to the programming as well. Are there any questions at this point?
Yes, that's the, you've kind of already touched on it, Mr. Bayless, in terms of how IB is not in of itself a curriculum. But can you kind of elaborate what you're saying? How this particular curriculum choice is going to work with IB or how those two things go together?
So, thank you, Farah. It's a, it's a very good question. The idea is that the IB is a framework. It's a lens. We, teachers teach standards to the Ohio Department of Education standards, and we prepare students to be prepared to. To take those state assessments and show that they are making accomplishments. Or, yeah, accomplishments towards those, those steps and standards. And so the framework that we believe in overall of having students that are open-minded, caring, risk takers. Knowledgeable, all those facets of things that we value as a community of educators and of parents and learners. Those things are embraced within the curriculum. So I'm teaching you how to work with informational text. I'm teaching you vocabulary. I'm working on. I'm working on information, our literary text, and then I'm combining those ideas within the selection and the criteria of the materials that we're utilizing. And so ultimately, that's what we want to do. We want to make sure that they're not separate. But they support what we believe as a community and look at the materials. That is in fact the case.
And can you elaborate a little bit why this particular selection worked better with IB than maybe some of the others that you looked at?
I don't know if it worked better for IB. We believe more along the lines, if I'm correct, Olivia, that it supported the science of reading. Because the science of reading is way more important than the IB connection. Do our kids getting the tier one instruction overall? And the supports that teachers need to be able to make the adjustments on the fly to support those tier two learners that aren't learning. And those tier three learners and be able to come on those supports. And teachers don't have to rely on going to teacher paid teacher. And I don't even know what those other sites are, because I don't even pay attention to them. But I have scientifically based research methods behind what I need to do to work with those particular students. And I'm not just willy-nilly out there on the internet trying to find things to do. And we, our teachers appreciate that. I think that was the big part of it. They, they need to be able to go to find a resource, and they don't have to, they don't have to go out there and look specific, or not specifically, look. This, you know, generally out in the, in the web to find things. Here's what the kidneys work on for informational text, words per minute, understanding, comprehension, wherever the case is, and the materials are there. And they are aligned to, and they're, and they are aligned to the science of reading. And by the way, a couple of those units might have some supports that are internationally minded. That are talking about the things that we are talking about as an IB district.
And I'll add to that, William, and just say that, you know, big pieces of why the team went to look for a curriculum was because, looking at our data, we needed our students to be. Stronger in their foundational knowledge of literacy skills. So that they're able to apply them, especially in more efficiently as they move into middle school and high school and adult life. The other piece is, which you also hit on, looking at, we had all these different resources that everyone was using. And is that equitable when I look across a grade level, if I have one teacher that's using this resource and a different one? And one's better than the other, is that equitable that all these students aren't all getting access to the best quality rigorous curriculum? So that's where we were looking at this. And the. The Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts, part of the team discussion was, there's two pieces to this curriculum. There's the foundational knowledge skills and then knowledge-based skills, which moves into. Different types of texts and conversations. And a lot of the teachers spent a lot of time, the, the teachers on this team spent a lot of time deep in these curriculums, especially Open Court. And CKLA. And they found that CKLA with that knowledge-based piece could link quite well with the IB pieces and units that they have. With some tweaking and working with that. So, and the big piece was, we were also taking this away from, like, what William wants or what I want. We were using the rubrics to make it what is best for teaching our students, not what I believe I like the most. So taking it away from our, what we like, and I'll tell you that some of the teachers in the group. We had one curriculum that came out, and they're like, I'm so excited for this one. I think this is it. I really like it. And we started going through the rubric, and they were like, oh. Oh, no, it doesn't have that. And they were like, yeah, this, I was so excited and thought this one was it. And you know, sometimes if you go on what your, your gut was when you first saw it, you liked it because it was pretty packaging and looked really cool. But when you got into the fine details and broke through the lesson plans, it wasn't what we needed for our kids, and it wasn't. Aligned with the way we know everyone learns to read. So. I hope that helped answer that question.
It did. Thank you to both of you.
I'll go ahead, Ken.
I'm just sort of curious if the science includes how we teach children to enjoy reading. Fundamentally, that matters a whole lot more than whether they can actually read. Of course, you can't enjoy reading if you cannot read. But, but what makes for, you know, what makes it easy to get to college, frankly, is enjoying reading. If you spend, you know, time during your summers, summer vacation, reading, you're going to nail the SAT. You're also just going to be able to read. Just the only way to accumulate the vocabulary that it takes to succeed in life is to read. What do we do to help them enjoy reading?
Well, I think part of that is a discussion about. Enjoying reading, picking literature to obviously aligns the kids, particularly, you're, you're going to see that, Ken, in a second, Dr. Stanley, I'm sorry. In a second, when we talk about what we've done adolescently with the grant money there. But more importantly, we've talked about with teachers, there's this idea that, oh, I kind of have to dumb it down. And I know this is a rude concept, right? But I have to dumb it down, right? Let the kids not get in. So maybe the kid, and that is not the case. In reality, the kid needs to struggle productively. At the grade level they're at. Because the brain needs to exercise and needs to stretch, it's like any other muscle in your body. I can do, I can do a hundred bench presses with a five-pound bar, and I'm not getting anywhere. I need to grapple with a hundred and twenty pound, hundred and twenty-five pound bar and bench rest that. That's how, how I get stronger and I get better. And so making sure those kids have access to their on-level grade materials and that we provide supports for them. And that's part of the CKLA package that we discussed. There's really a lot of discussion around, how do you support the kids? With the material at grade level so that it's interesting to them and that you're not, a kid's not bored.
Yeah, and to add to that, Mr. Stanley, the science of reading does look at functional MRIs to, in that in depth. Of how we learn to read. The beauty of this curriculum that we landed on is it has those foundational skills that we have to learn to be able to be literate. You teach that, but the knowledge-based piece, they're taught in units that are really interesting, very in-depth and rigorous. So some of the teachers were like, well, this content that you're discussing is not grade level. Correct. It's not about the. Teaching the content. It was about having the experience. So some of them in a second grade curriculum goes into like. Ancient Mesopotamia and talks about different things with that, and they do different experiences and discussions. To help invigorate that love of reading because it's a combination of those things. So that is also what this links in.
It's really, you have Daxton Davis as well. Question?
It's a, oh, it's just a comment. I, I want to say thank you. Um, I, I think for the structure and leadership that you all provided because. This is something that would have benefited one of my children a long time ago. And I think that it makes a huge difference that you all sort of took hands off and said, not, not our choice in particular. And that the teachers. Were, were given the guidance and the structure to be able to look at something that was showing what scientifically. Works because that's what somebody wasn't willing to do. Years ago. So, thank you.
Thank you. But it is no fault to them. I mean, realistically, it's, the research has actually been out there. Tunneler's research has been out there since. Ninety-four, ninety-eight?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six. And, and it's really funny, and I, and I, I'm incredibly saddened that we lost, and you guys may not even know who she is. But Candace Gooch was our, we had hired her as a kindergarten as a title teacher, and she really helped. Tremendantly with this grant and my understanding as a curriculum director of those, of early learning of reading. And she came from Mississippi, and Mississippi, because we always kind of laugh, like, you know, you, if you're in education, you don't want to be in Louisiana, you don't want to be in Mississippi. Those are the two states that are always at the bottom. But actually, Mississippi has really turned their act around. And they've changed their teacher programs around in terms of making sure that teachers are prepared with the science of reading. And that school districts are funded with the science of reading in mind. And their, their test numbers, their assessment numbers have been tremendous the last four or five years. You can, you can Google it on New York Times and, and look at it. But it's actually tremendous. When we had the opportunity to have her in a dish before she left. And have those conversations and her point to this, it was amazing. So when we had the opportunity to have her in addition before she left uh and 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 have those conversations and her point to this, it was amazing. Um, I'm gonna talk a little bit about Langston. We we got that half a million dollars for Langston mid year. We applied in October, November, and in December, I think we had to apply. And then they plopped the money in February for us. So it was a midyear commitment uh for us. We actually thought we were gonna get the money in August of this year. Uh, but they said, nope, here it is, gotta spend it, get on it. Uh, so we were able to uh help our teachers uh pick a very, a topic that was simple. Because, you know, it's very, again, everything is controversial. And helping teachers find the sweet point of where they're ready to work at and come uh to a consensus of what they want to work on. And they said, you know, between all four core areas and the other area of um any other area of learning, they felt that writing was an area that they could approach. And so actually, ODE ran a uh, a cohort of professional development in March and April focused on the writing revolution, which uh looks at the Hockman method of writing. And it's a very explicit and a very um explicit, yeah, this explicit, very explicit method uh basis strategies to explain how to teach writing. And believe it or not, and I know people may not want to hear it, but you know, some schools are uh Langston has had some issues. And this is one thing they could get all of them aboard. And so we act, all the teachers got on board and said, this is something we can do. Science teacher, Spanish teacher, guidance counselors, principal. This is something that we can all go behind and say, this is something we can support. And this is what we can approach next fall. So they all attended to professional development. The teachers that have missed, we're gonna sign them up for a fall cohort. And it's five weeks of training. Uh, and they're gonna work on a a building improvement plan focused on the writing revolution, about how they can support uh the writing strategies and off core areas of of instruction. So super impressed and actually got even better because uh Bob Reinhardt was able to support the high school. Uh, there were some teachers at the high school said, this sounds good. I want, w- we should be able to translate this from eighth grade to ninth grade. And teachers participated in that training as well. And Bob, this said, this focus, even though it's not grant funded, this moves some money for professional development and get those high school teachers on boards. We can transition from eighth grade to ninth grade as well. Langston had the one school, one book as well. And one thing I did not expect to happen, Sheila came back to me, Ms. Hicks, and she said, William, we spent all these monies on the books. The kids chose the books, they did all this and they all, everybody was reading the book. And then she was like, I need the other two books for summers, for summer reading. The kids voted and they want to read. They read Ghost and they wanted to read the two follow up books from it. So they said, if, so instead of reading whatever they read before, they're like, we want to read the two follow up books. And so we purchased the books for summer reading based on student choice and voice. Uh, and that's the first time that they've done that. And I was extremely happy to hear that students actually were excited about reading and they wanted to continue in the series uh that they had chose to do for the the one school, one book uh in May. Uh, Tara Beard was hired as a literacy coach. She'll be there next year and she will help transition and keep these things going on track. Just like Olivia works with grades K through five, uh she will be working grades six through eight. And then in the fall of twenty twenty one, uh the teachers really at Langston don't have a strong idea behind the science of reading. And there is no letters training for uh grades six through eight. But they'll be doing a book study that focuses on uh adolescent literacy and supporting, getting a better idea of of how kids read and their struggles. Um, and so that will not be quite as intense as the seventy hours of letters training that they got uh for grade six through five. But they will be better prepared to understand how adolescents read and how to work with those struggles, struggling readers and learners. And that's it. If you have any questions, we'll go over right now.
I'll just comment one, one thing. My sister, who was a ninety one graduate of the district valedictorian, now has a Harvard PhD and is a professor out in Massachusetts specializing in dyslexia and dyspraxia. I've been asking her questions about all the different things you've been talking about here. And she uh like her one comment is, well, I've never used that method, but the research base is strong. So you're you're getting good feedback from an Oberlin native who's a specialist in this area. So, thank you.
Um, I do have a a question about whether or not um moving in this direction is related to the state's decisions on dyslexia or if the district was just moving in this direction and there's um some synergy there.
The states, uh this plan are the grant aligns to the Ohio's Department of Education Literacy Initiative to Raise Achievement for All Students. So directly aligns to it. Uh, we know if kids can't read, they can't, they can't advance into in the other areas. So their attempt to approach literacy at the younger levels was very intentional. The fact that I believe personally, the fact that a lot of middle school and high schools and that have tried to get on the the grant bandwagon for the six eight or the six twelve grand, uh six twelve bandwagon uh was assigned it. A lot of people felt like, ah, that's not me. But then they came out with the second round saying like, no, 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 it's not just about K five. What are you gonna do to support it afterwards? You can't do that work K five and this like, oh, I'm done. So that's why we, that's why we will, that's why we applied for the second round of the funding for six eight. Um, because there wasn't, people didn't apply. We were like, well, we 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 obviously it doesn't stop at five. How can we uh, how can we take these monies and, you know, make advantages for our students? So um it is all aligned to Ohio's plan to raise literacy and uh Ohio's plan, one more time, Olivia, it's Ohio's plan.
Ohio's Raise Literacy Achievement.
Thank you. So there's a plan, yes.
It does align well when you're talking about the the recent house bill that passed. The guidance for that has not come down, that won't come down until the end of December. Um, but because Oberlin has aligned their plan with Ohio's plan to raise literacy achievement. I would tend to think that a lot of the things that we're doing are gonna get us kind of ahead of the game when that, when all of that guidance comes out in the end of December.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and I'm on that committee. So hopefully anything I learned there too, I bring back and try to help us as well.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if I mentioned that, but Olivia, that is a privilege. Olivia was actually selected uh to be on that committee out of all the ESCs in Ohio. And she's on that committee because of her knowledge base. And she's, we were fortunate to be able to tap into that, that knowledge base moving forward.
Um, I don't know if this statistic is um, is correct or still correct. But I know when um, when my kids were in school, I'd I'd read, I think, overcoming dyslexia. And one of the numbers that stuck with me was that whether or not a student is identified um with dyslexia or some other um reading disability that about twenty five percent of students, either because of the circumstances that they live or function in, exhibit some of the same problems in learning to read. And so like moving in this direction for all students would mean that we'd be doing something to just capture um those kids wherever they are, regardless of their income or um or diagnoses or non diagnoses. Um, and and that feels really encouraging to me, so.
And yes, those are the stats that most agree to. That's from Schewitz. Um, yeah, and this this work, the work we've been doing with letters is so that regardless of, at the end of the day, I want all kids to succeed, as I think all of us do in education. And that's what the work is, is about looking at each student, their strengths and their needs and capitalizing on those and doing the appropriate strategies to make them successful, regardless of if they have any kind of label. So that's the work we've been doing with letters, with looking at our different diagnostics, and then with adding this curriculum piece.
So when you approve the curriculum later on this evening, you know the reason why.
Thank you.
Appreciate having the presentation. When you get it, when you get a ti- big ticket item like this, having this level of detail is really important. We want to make sure we're investing our community's resources in appropriate things. And this has convinced us, so thank you.
And we wanted, and the grant is actually providing the other resources like professional development. Those other things, resources that we said, like having the the coaches to monitor. Because it right, everything happens like, I love coach, I'm not coach, I love Dr. Hall, what monitors gets done? And so, um, you know, he was like a coach, right? He's in your ear. So it was like, what, what, which monitor gets done? And so having the coaches really kind of, you know, alleviate and help the new curriculum director helps out. Because it's gonna be the position of somebody to kind of monitor those processes and make sure those things are happening.
One, the one thing my sister chimed in on is that you have to have extensive training and you have to be monitoring it. That was, those were two of her comments in my text string with her just now hearing about this, so.
I may have used that phrase maybe once or twice.
Only once or twice, okay.
Thank you, as well, appreciate it.
Thank you guys for letting us have some time.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Now, um, I wanted to go briefly over some of the highlights that we've done with our iReady data and from the first assessment to the third assessment. In two uh twenty one, twenty two, some supports that we're gonna create um that we have. Some, some, to cover some things that we have, the presentation I want to give. Uh, the data I'm gonna show you right now do not have Oberlin High School uh data in it. There are testing in the middle of, in a course exam, so we're saying, so do not have third grade data. So they're not into data points I'm gonna give far as a progress. Uh, the data points I'm gonna show you will have Eastwood, Prospect and Langston in it. As for funding for additional academic and social emotional support uh will be for the twenty one, twenty two school year. Um, elementary reading program, we just heard from William will be in place for next year uh to provide support for our students. Uh, letters, writing, uh writing across curriculum is something that we're gonna focus on for next year as well. Our progress monitoring tool will be iReady utilized for uh next year as well. And that'll be utilized from K all the way to tenth grade next year. So we can get some uh progress monitoring tearing on how our students are doing. And we also will focus on curriculum alignment and pace and guide some review resources as well for the next school year. Uh, we already started that process this summer. Our reading iReady diagnostic results here um, an area of reading from Eastwood, Prospect and Langston. It shows our first diagnostic uh from our third diagnostic. It showed that we have shown some growth within um, within our interventions that we've been doing throughout the year. So our first select diagnostic, uh we showed five forty three percent, the students were at tier one. And we increased that to fifty eight percent of our students at tier one. And tier one is the point where you want to get students to at grade level are moving towards that direction. And tier two, um, we have made headway gain in there too as well, from thirty percent to twenty one percent and tier three as well. Um, you notice on the side, it says a placement by domain. So the first diagnostic is the light shaded area at the bottom and second di- or the top, what shows the third diagnostic test. We um progress monitor test that we administered for our students as well. So you do see that we were having showing growth in um vocabulary, literature, informational text, phonemic awareness in those areas as well. So we have been showing some growth in those areas. Um, in spite of the pandemic, we've been showing growth and trying to close that gap area, which is phenomenal. Or some of our students been at home, some are been here, some haven't returned yet. But we've been showing a lot of growth within our students uh from the first assessment to the third assessment. Are we there yet? Absolutely not. Uh, we we will still have students in a tier three area, but uh we are showing some some movement um for the first to the third. And based on a lot of our data that um we have, we've been holding our own throughout the pandemic. And also our teachers have been doing a phenomenal job of keeping our kids up to par with acad- academically. And our parents have been doing a great job by working with our teachers as well.
Can I just echo something I just heard you say? I'm impressed there's not more loss with with the craziness of this year. So I I feel reassured with what I was, I was scared when you started this presentation, what we were gonna see, so.
They, we've been to a lot of uh of work with interventions, summer programming. Uh, we have a hundred and twenty four kids in our summer program, uh which I've talked to other super tennis, I said, how you get a hundred and twenty four kids in summer program? So our kids are ready to come back and they've been working. Economical disadvantage in the reading, we've shown growth in economic disadvantage area. For first assessment to the third. Math, the iReady diagnostic, we've have shown growth in math. And that was a large, um, the tier one went from first assessment to the third assessment to have increased as well. Of course, as a district, uh based on our data, our summer program focuses on informational text because we knew that was a weak area. A lot of our math skills, as determined here, you can see um geometry is the area of and that we work with as well. Economically disadvantaged, we have shown gains as well in math. So there in our green went from twenty six percent to forty six percent, so a twenty percent gain in that area as well. Some of the highlights for the year, um, in spite of the pandemic's been going on with on a in a school, out of school, hybrid models, various models. Um, I believe I just talked to Farrah about this before. It's um, it's interesting, our, we have seventy, seventy seven seniors graduated. So all our seniors at in twelfth grade, identified at twelfth grade from twenty twenty uh one school year, all of them graduated. Does that mean every kid graduate? Um, it, the clock ticks when you get to be a freshman in high school. And throughout that process, um we may lose some students throughout that process. But um due to students transferring to that school system, um and the school system's not picking them up. So to kind of uh plays with our data a little bit. But this data is showing that the seniors at beginning of twenty uh twenty to twenty one school year graduated, all of them who signed up graduated that came in. And we graduated our seniors. And as I mean, we may have a hundred percent on a graduation rate because we had some of the seniors, uh as a freshman. And let's take clocks them as a freshman, they moved on to different places and we can't track them. Um, as our graduation ceremony, we've noticed we had five students that received associate degrees uh from a dual credit program. Uh, talked to the counselors, she said that was very innovative. We have students go to Wellington, we have students on site. Uh, and it helps too with our middle school going on too as well, where we have twenty plus students earning the college credit at middle school. We had seven students received industry credentialing in our rise up program. Uh, that's a program we started up with our retail program there. One full IB diploma um student. Um, stated before, twenty plus students at Langston soon earn college credit in CCP. Um, we may actually expand that next year. We're looking at offering two college courses at the middle school. And we had a hundred and twenty four students are rolling in summer programming. And throughout this pandemic, um our building projects stayed on track. So there's some highlights and with all the the chaos going on throughout the school year, um we had a lot of accomplishments and with our learning in the math and reading area. We've, we have made some gains um throughout that and we have not slipped back tremendously from there. Any questions? And I'd like to thank our teachers and support staff who created all the interventions from the camps to tutoring to um to Mr. Frank's ingenious idea of having uh fourth quarter enrichment time so students can make up classes. Um, and that helped out a lot. It was um team effort, everyone working together to think of these innovative ways to get our students to graduate. Okay, concludes my report.
All right, thank you, everyone. Action items. Do I have a motion to approve board items A through F?
Still moved.
I can.
Um.
Oh, no.
I'm I'm, I I see a A.
I'm, I'm, I, I see, uh, A through D. Is it, so we do E and F at the same time?
No, they have to be done separately. Okay, so.
That's A through D?
Yes. All right. So do I have a motion to approve board items A through B?
Yes, we'll take that amendment.
Second.
So I think we should draw attention to some of these. David, are you going to talk to them? Like particularly never seen.
And I have a, I have a question. I, yeah, I guess I was under the impression that we would just be doing A through C first. But I guess that's not how it's written. It also includes the O O E A contract. And I have to abstain from voting on B and C. I don't really want to abstain from voting on D because it's very important. Um, and I don't have a conflict there, but I have a conflict with B and C. So.
Being with B and C. So would I just do like approval for A and B and then?
No, so.
How, how would I, how would I do that?
So Farah, are you asking for us to amend this, uh, to the motion being A through C? Take D by itself?
Right, D, E and F by themselves, so that I can vote on those. And I would abstain from A through C. The minutes are, you know, they're pretty perfunctory. I don't think that's a big deal, but I don't.
Does that work, Bob? Can we?
Yes, yes.
So we'll take that second friendly amendment to the motions.
Thank you.
The motion is we are, we'll be voting on will be A through C. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve board items A through C?
Yes.
All right.
I second.
Thank you.
The third time.
Dave, you want to hit B and C?
Yes. Out of my own minutes, um, I will be, item B is approved under the rest of the, of the exchange between, the property of Oberlin City Schools, exchange of properties in the Oberstate Schools in the city of Oberlin. Um, so property trade, um, at Pleasant Street, there is, uh, a section there that is part of the cities. And the city, um, and, uh, the district has worked out where we changed that parcel to parcel. And on Pleasant Street for Prospect Elementary School. Um, that parcel is needed because we can utilize that field for, um, different events, for sporting events, for activities, for field days. Um, so present Pleasant Street location is, um, a value to the district as well. And also the, the Prospect School, um, the city would like to, um, utilize that. Um, and they're still talking to community members on how to utilize it, but also keeps, um, the Prospect Elementary, um, within the community as community use as well, which is, um, a priority for the district. Um, and hopefully we'll have our app school activities over there. It'll be, um, hopefully it'll become a meeting area for community members and even for our, um, for our events as well, we can utilize that facility. For app school programming, for students and also for summer activities too as well. So we'll work with the city on, um, different supports that they may need from us. To make that a successful project over at Prospect, but I think it's a great opportunity for the city and community of Oberlin as well. Item C is approved as a sustainable reserve fund, participant, participant agreement with the city of Oberlin. The Sustainable Reserve Fund in the city of Oberlin has agreed to provide, um, to fund part of our solar array. Two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars towards our solar array, um, for the district and a new elementary building. The solar array will fund or will provide about eighty percent of our, um, power electricity for the new elementary building. It would also be connected up to the dashboard as well. So our students will learn, um, the usage of, um, power from there. And also our car charter stations, um, as well. So all that'll be hooked up as a learning experience for our students as well. But we definitely like to thank the Sustainable Reserve Fund, uh, in the city for supporting the solar array project for the, um, new elementary building. And hopefully we'll, when a new high school come online, we'll invest in another project as well. Item D, R A through B and C, so have I D.
So David, can I ask one question about the agreement with the city? Just, just so I'm clear, you know, the, the one silver lining of all of this is also that we wouldn't have to raise the building. We wouldn't have to, the district will not have to incur the cost to raise the building. So I know there's all kinds of funky things with the funds from the state. When we finally get them, not if, when they finally come. But I wanted to check in the contract, it talks about the closing costs. So, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming this is just kind of standard contract language that that isn't. But I'm just curious if we have any kind of idea what additional costs the district is going to have to face in closing costs for this transfer to happen. I mean, the building's in good shape.
There's, uh, we'll work that up to city pieces. I'm not sure what the cost will be, but you have the D transferring costs, different little minor costs with it. Definitely it's, um, to abate that building at demo, probably half a million dollars. So it probably saved the district, uh, and the community half a million dollars for the abatement and demo of it. But there's probably some minor, um, fees that we have to pay. Um, far as the equipment inside of there, we have to go with the city to see what they like to utilize, what we can utilize. Well, um, you know, far as what, what they want from there, what they don't want from there as well. So still another process we have to go through with them on, um, how much all that's going to cost, the D transferring, um, the equipment inside of the building. So that's the next process after the board approves this. If the board approves this, um, movement here, we'll go through that with them, but it'll be a minimal cost. It's not, um, going to be a million dollars or anything like that. Yeah.
Okay, and now we, uh, motion for D. Call the row. Then motion for D. All right, call the row.
Ms. Emmerich?
Ameca, I'm sorry.
Um, I abstain because I'm a city of Oberlin employee.
Thank you. Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
You're muted, Ken.
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. Okay, do I have a motion to approve board item D?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
I just want to thank all of the teams and once again express appreciation for the, um, amazing way our teachers and administration work together harmoniously through what could be a really difficult time. They have great respect for each other and they take a long time and I, I, I feel for all of you. But I, I'm, I am continually impressed by the spirit that we are able to maintain, um, in this district. So thank you.
Yes.
And also the spirit of patience. Oh, is there any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to thank the O A as well. It was, um, and the cooperation that it provided for us. And it was, um, took some long nights, um, and days, and sometimes we're almost at nine-thirty at night to almost till it's ten o'clock at night, um, negotiating. Um, and it was the, at the end of negotiations, it was great for Robin Dejus, um, to the president of O A. Said, it was really weird because at the end we usually shake hands and talk and everything else. And we have that relationship with the, with the O A that, um, she actually came down to my office and we shook hands and said, great job. And we both, um, cooperated on both parts, but, um, that cooperation, double O A was really, really, uh, greatly appreciated. And a thank you, um, to all the teachers and everyone in double O A.
I think I also just, you know, it's, it's what you do over the years, uh, with the double O A, the communication both directions. I know you meet with them, uh, regularly. And, you know, the cooperation is not just every three years, but it's, it's, it's every day, every week. And, and that goes on both sides. And Mikey and I appreciate the, the union, the, the teachers, and I appreciate the administration.
Now, is there any further discussion? No, call the row.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. Okay, do I have a motion to approve board item E?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, further discussion? Nope, call the row.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. Okay, almost there. Um, do I have a motion to approve board item F?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call the row.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, okay. Treasurers' items. Do I have a motion to approve treasurer's items? So that's A through F two?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, treasurer's report, um, we finished the month of May with twenty-one million, six hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars. Um, everything balanced. And catch reconciliation shows year to date with the building fund and the general fund. We received two hundred and six thousand plus dollars in interest. Um, it is a very tough market. Luckily, we were able to see some big benefits in July and October from things that we had invested prior to the COVID incident. So, um, it wasn't as bad as I thought it would be on interest. So it does help the district. Next, with the, um, five-year forecast report, the general fund report. We are ninety-two percent through the year. At the end of May, we've collected, um, ninety-nine point three percent of our revenue. And our expenses are at eighty-six percent to budget. So we are holding fast with that. We have used, um, the ESRS funds to offset some of our costs since we did not riff any of the employees this year. Um, especially on the support side that some di- districts did by cutting their hours. So we were able to keep all of our teachers and all of our classified staff employed along with our coaches and athletics. And advisory committees, um, and student programs. All funds report. Again, we are, um, setting well, the building project. Um, spent a little over eight point five million dollars going July through May. Um, the building like Mr. Dr. Hall stated is on time and we are still under budget. We did have some expenses that I'll go over and I, um, see that I didn't foresee, and that was the, I forgot about the interest on the cell of the note. So our debt, we do have to do an appropriations change to cover that. But other than that, overall, all the funds are in the black. So um, we are good on all funds and we are finalizing all of our federal grants currently so that. I'm sorry, somebody's cutting it. William, Dave, can you, Dr. Hall, can you mute William? So then item B is we received from the Rotary Club of Oberlin. One thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars to honor the class of twenty-one from Oberlin High School, class of seventy-seven. Item C is the approval of permanent appropriations for year twenty-one, twenty-two. We did revise, um, the appropriations due to the ESRS money that we didn't know about back in January. Um, and that's really the basis of most of those changes. And all that is broken down by fund in the board folder. So for this year's appropriations, we do need to increase the debt fund appropriations. A hundred thousand dollars to cover, like I said, for the notes that we sold. Um, the interest, two years ago, the interest was seventy-one thousand dollars and I didn't include that into the appropriations for expenses for this year. But we did sell those notes back in April and next year our interest payment on those same notes will only be thirty-two thousand dollars. So it was a big savings.
Can you, can you explain? You said something about the ESRS money and why that impacts the appropriations? Can I give us a little bit more detail?
We received this year with the COVID, um, epidemic, the federal government gave three allowances. And ESRS is the definition of it. It goes by the CARES Act also, but ESRS is really the funding for the educational side. Um, so we did get around early on in October. In December, um, they passed another round and then President Biden passed the third round. So we also didn't know about the literacy grants and that's another federal program. So with the adding of all that money, we have to increase our appropriations. And that falls under the federal grants line, which in our appropriation, it falls underneath the, um, other revenue line. So um, is that good enough or do you need more special revenues funds? I'm sorry, that's what it's called on our appropriations.
Okay, yeah, that helps. Thank you.
Okay. Normally the district gets about one point two and this year we're looking at three point three million. Um, the last one is, again, it has to do with the ESRS money in January. I didn't know what that amount would be. And also with the literacy grants, picking up the extra half a million dollars, um, for the middle school. So we needed to adjust the revenues side so that we could appropriate that amount of money for next year. So there is two resolutions that go with the appropriations. One is the revenue side, the resources, and then the other is the appropriation. And then the county auditor would certify that the funds are legit and then that we haven't exceeded our revenues. And I'll file all that paperwork this week. With them. And then the last one is the transfer. At the end of the year, we have some funds that we know aren't self-alliance. One is athletics, the other one is food service for us. Um, we did see a huge increase with meals being eaten after the students came back. And that has lowered this number. Um, it was as high as a hundred thousand dollars and I'm pretty sure we will end the year, um, with less than forty-five thousand dollars needing to be exchanged to food serve. Then thirty-five thousand for the athletic funds. The way sports were in the limited capacity, we really lost just about all the revenue from sports. That helps offset the cost for the athletic program. And that's all I have, Mr. President. Are there any questions?
I was expecting fireworks to go off with the food services part. I just, I just want to say better food. Like happy customers, less money, you know?
I have one more question. Uh, something that kind of caught my eye on the, I think it stands for fiscal year board report. Was a really big percentage increase in the personal property taxes. It went up like, you know, compared to the year before, it was like four.
Yes, that's the, that's the nexus money. Nexus pipeline. Um, we got half of it the first year in two thousand twenty. Um, and then this year we have a full payment of it. They are actually paying about eight hundred and forty-three thousand dollars to the general fund. Um, they are short about one point two million dollars a year. So depending how that works out with the, um, there, they were supposed to have a review in May and that got pushed back to November. And I think it might even get pushed back into next February now. For them to go before the review board and then they still have the right to go to the Supreme Court to try to get those numbers adjusted. So what the, they are currently paying what their last offer was. But the district, uh, with the original, the way the auditors have it in the state, state agrees is they are short to Oberlin School District about one point two million dollars a year.
Okay, so then that number will move around.
Yes.
Comes in quite a bit.
And the amount of money that we are taking in there, the board, you see that. And the amount of money that we are taking in there, the board, you see that amount online. Oh, it's not on this report here, but we did put that in a capital reserve fund, it is on the five-year forecast. So all that money we are receiving from them is going into the reserve, uh, capital improvement reserve, hopefully to help for the new high school, middle school or to pay off. Debt early so that we could go back to the voters to um, do another bond issue for the high school, middle school.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright.
Any other questions?
No further discussion, uh, call the roll.
Ms. Amaka.
Yes.
Ms. Shum.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanley.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve superintendent's items A through G five?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, item A, approve of the twenty-first, ours for twenty-one, twenty-two educational service um, center for PEP. Item B is contract with API, item C is a annual occurrence um, for twenty-one, for next school year, middle school career tech waiver. We now offer career tech courses at our middle school, so we have to submit a waiver to the state. Item D is uh, I ready of K five, I'm sorry, for K five reading program. Uh, Mr. Picor, Dallas, Mr. Bayless have um, provided information regarding that. As well, item E is approved of curriculum associates, I ready program for a one year. Item F approved of curriculum associates as well, Phi ready, reading and writing three-year and S grant funded. Item G is personnel report. Um, I don't, number one is uh, rescinding Amy Meese um, non-renewal. Item two is uh, resignations, we're thank for Mr. Bayless for his uh, service at a district. And thank you for all you've done for us um, and the students and staff and community as well. Um, we appreciate all that you, all efforts you put forward for us. We also have some new, um, some permanent building subs resignations, cuz they um, have taken some other positions as well. Item three is change positions for Sheila Hicks, um, she changed her salary, um, Liam O'Donnell. From high school intervention, from high school teacher to intervention to coach, intervention to college career coach. And Margaret Dewey has changed from um, five point five six, she's taken Donna Scher's spot uh, to one point um, to full-time, from halftime to full-time. Item four is employment as well, we have some seasonal helpers as well working in the district. We also have some uh, new teachers on board, um, Alexa Davila, who was, we're taking Fredo's transfer position. Uh, she worked with us last year as building sub and filled in for us and a great job and we hire her this year as a teacher. Uh, Aaron Mason was intervention, was the new intervention specialist, we just hired in. We also have a new curriculum director, um, Amy Swoop, who will be coming in to um, to take Mr. Bayless's position. Uh, she's from Norwalk and um, did a phenomenal job to our interview, interview team consists of teach, consisted of teachers and administrators and. They unanimously selected her to fill Mr. Bayless's spot. She was a curriculum director slash technology person at um, Norwalk. And hopefully she can also help Steve out too at the same time. Um, I'd like to tell her that we had technology pretty much taken care of with Super Steve, so don't step, don't bother Super Steve, step on his toes. So um, Ethan uh, Weplan is a new social studies teacher for the district. And taking Christine Bayless's spot. Also not on here as well, um, to go back, Christine Bayless uh, should be on here for resignations as well. Um, she'll be going to Columbus with her um, husband, uh, William. Item five, supplementals. We have supplementals for summer school instructors, summer school pair pros, um, mostly our summer school staff and support staff that um, help makes summer school successful. Uh, this is the last uh, week for summer school and I'd like to thank our teachers, our students, our parents for senior students. Um, and uh, they enjoyed their time they had at Common Ground and also with Juggler Terry. Mr. President, that concludes my report, like approval, item A through G. Five?
Uh, yes, um, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, um, can you kind of elaborate on or clarify why we have a rescission of the non-renewal of a contract? For someone who is also resigning?
Um.
The T-SO, yeah, position, yeah.
Yes, that teacher was um, was um, she was non-renewed, um, then we talked to her over a time period. And um, we reached decision to offer um, opportunity to resign under advice.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, if there's no further discussion, call the roll.
Ms. Amaka.
Yes.
Ms. Shum.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson Davidson.
I think she's muted, she muted?
Is she frozen too?
I think she might be frozen.
Oh, yeah, she perfectly still.
Exactly.
She's frozen.
Okay.
Mr. Stanley.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Stanley.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes. Okay, um. Comments, any uh, board updates?
JBS doesn't meet until Thursday, so nothing from them.
Alright, uh, hearing of the public on other items?
Sorry, I wasn't even quick enough, uh, the endowment board did meet and we funded, we agreed to fund all eight. Uh, applications, they're terrific applications, we thank the teachers for, for those and for the great work. And I thank the uh, the other, you know, representatives on the, on the endowment uh, board. Um, and yeah, there'll be some money left over for a fall, a fall round.
That's good to hear.
And then I wanted to give a little update on the committee for the opening ceremony. Um, we've met once uh, virtually and we've landed on what we think the date will be, which is Sunday, September twelfth for the opening ceremony. And it'll include a ribbon cutting and we're trying to do a type of um, commemoration, like bringing in um. Keepsakes and things from over the years, we're hoping to get uh, alumni of the school district involved. To bring in items that we can kind of uh, have at the new building and ha- let folks take pictures and share information um, from the past. Uh, we're not able to do tours and things of the old schools because they will no longer be in possession of the school district at that point. But we wanted to kind of bring in that honoring, you know, where we came from as we move forward into a new building. Um, and then there's gonna be, we're probably gonna have some food that's um, provided by different um, groups, student high school groups that are um, fundraising. Uh, for their activities, I don't have the specifics on which groups yet, but uh, so that's a little bit of a rundown, what we're talking about doing. Um, and we have another meeting on June twenty-ninth.
All park of time, like morning, night?
Uh, I don't know the time.
Showing up at eight o'clock cuz I'm booking it now, so.
All day sounds good to me.
Okay, um, any other board updates? No, um, alright, hearing of the public on other items?
We have not had any items submitted, I do like to thank community, great Juneteenth event was downtown and thank you, it was a great time. Um, and organizing it, that was really well, very well organized.
Alright, um. Okay, future meetings, so August tenth, uh, special session, session, um, six PM in person at uh, Oberlin High School. In August twenty-fourth, regular session meeting, uh, six PM in person at Oberlin High School.
Can I just make one comment? Um, four of us will have to be running again, like so, so the school board election is coming up. And so I think the deadline to get your applications, your six signed petitions in is before our next meeting. So just make sure you're paying attention to that if you are running. If you are not running, could you please give some very careful thought as to other candidates in the community? If there are candidates in the community who are interested in hearing more about it, I'm sure any of us would be happy to uh, share. This is a really important role uh, for the community and we want to make sure that we get people educated about what the job is.
Yeah. Alright, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, call the roll.
Ms. Amaka.
Yes.
Ms. Shum.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanley.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned.
Kim, could you hear us when you were like, had you like already disconnected, okay? Cuz all, all of a sudden we called your name and then you were just like.
I took you as a yes vote.
Yes, you're just sitting.
Perfectly.
Oh, look at her screen frozen.
I, I said on my screen, I was moving and all of you were frozen. I was like, hmm, I think there's a problem here. Anyway.
Alright, goodnight everybody.
For, for asking or, or thinking about me.
Alright, goodnight everybody.
Take care.